I'd like to call the Board of Trustees regular meeting Monday, June 1st at 6:30 in order. Please rise and join me in the Fledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Approval of meeting agenda.
Mr. Supervisor, we have several changes to the agenda. We need to add items H, I, and J. H will be the service counter barrier proposal. I will be the extension of local state of emergency. And J will be firefighters hazard pay. We also need to make a note that the public hearing that was scheduled for tonight has been canceled and rescheduled for June 18th at 6:30.
June 18th at 6:30?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other additions or deletions? Any questions?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda with adding H, I, and J to the agenda.
Support.
Thank you. Motion by trustee Gurley. I'm sorry, who is that? Support by clerk Candell. Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Number four, approval of minutes 5:4, 2020, 5:19, 2020, 5:27, 2020.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes from 5:4, 2020, 5:19, 2020, and 5:27, 2020, as presented.
Thank you. Motion by trustee Clifford, supported by treasurer Arnold. Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Public announcements. Any public announcements at this time? Okay, no public announcements. Any public comment? No public comment? Number seven, consent agenda. All items listed under this consent agenda are considered routine by the township board and will be enacted by one motion. According to established township meeting rules, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the board or public so requests at or prior to the meeting, in which event the chair of the meeting may remove such items from the consent agenda for discussion and consideration under agenda item number eight below. Approval of the consent agenda should be by majority roll call vote of those present and voting.
I have three additions to the current invoice list. That would be A and B commercial cleaning for $1,000 for May services, A and B commercial services for April services, $800, and carnic services for $175, bringing the new unpaid invoice total to $337,362 and 26 cents.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the consent agenda with the order in bills in the amount of $337,362 and 26 cents.
Second. I have a motion by trustee Gurley, supported by treasurer Arnold. Any other questions, discussion? Deputy Clifford, roll call please.
Gurley? Aye. Donald? Aye. Clifford?
Aye.
Tronley?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. There were no items removed from the consent agenda. There is no unfinished business. Number 10, new business. Fire department turnout gear replacement request. Good evening, Mr. White.
Good evening. The, um... Annually, the fire department budgets for turnout gear replacement, they usually replace about five sets per year. The equipment becomes, uh, reaches kind of an end of useful life cycle of protecting our firefighters. Uh, so this year, we did, uh, we are, we are requesting the board approve a, uh, amount of $10,570 with Douglas Safety Systems for the approval, or for the purchase of five sets of firefighter turnout gear. I'll just mention that, uh, in talking with Assistant Chief Hartway about this, he, when he met with our vendor, um, our vendor shared with them that he is aware that there will be a cost increase on, uh, turnout gear in October of this year. We did budget for additional sets of turnout gear starting after July 1st. So it is likely I'll come before you early in the budget year to buy another five sets just so that we get them at the, uh, little less cost. So with that, I'm just requesting the board's approval, uh, for the purchase with Douglas Safety Systems for the turnout gear in the amount of $10,570.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. White?
No, I don't. I've read, I've read it. I don't have your ground under.
Motion?
I motion we approve the purchase of five sets of turnout gear from Douglas Safety Systems in the amount of $10,570.
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Clifford, supported by clerk Candell. Any other questions, discussion? Deputy clerk, roll call please.
Clifford?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Donald?
Aye.
Tronley?
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Letter B, fire department station two garage door openers proposal.
So, uh, Captain Tronley of the, uh, Lox Fire Department brought to my attention that the, um, fire department door opener units at our station number two have been, uh, become unreliable and could delay response if the openers failed at the time of a call. We did receive three bids for this repair, uh, to these units. Those are big doors with big openers. It's, it's not an inexpensive, uh, venture, but the, uh, the least expensive of all the bids was with Citywide Door Company in the amount of $7,100. Citywide's a company that both the fire department and I know the EMS uses, uh, primarily for their building, so we're very familiar with this vendor and very comfortable with their work product. So the recommendation would be for the board to approve, uh, Citywide Door Company replacing the door openers at, uh, station two in the amount of $7,100.
I'll make a motion, we approve the purchase of garage door openers from Citywide Door in the amount of $7,100 for the recommendation of our public safety director. Second.
I have a motion by treasurer Arnold, supported by trustee Gurley. Once again, any other questions or discussion? Deputy clerk, roll call please.
Donald?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Tronley?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Letter C, 2020, 2021 water service user charge rate. Good evening, Mr. Safe, welcome back.
Good evening, Mr. Supervisor and board members. It's great to be back. Just like every year, we, uh, along with the DBW superintendent, we review the proposed rates submitted by GLWA and make recommendations back to the township. The, uh, proposed rates for 2021 for the water, we are, uh, passing through an 80 cents increase by GLWA. And we're, we are recommending that we increase our rates by 80, uh, 80 cents this year. That's the pass-through, just like every year. That's, uh, all listed in my...
Just to summarize yet, Mr. Safe, we only are bumping our rate whatever, uh, our provider bumps it. We do not add on any extra costs.
Correct.
Thank you. I just want to clarify that.
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation of the township engineer and DBW superintendent to increase the water supply rate from $54.90 to $55.70 per TCF for the fiscal year 2020 to 2021. Second.
I have a motion by clerk Candell, supported by treasurer Arnold. Any other questions, discussion? And I want to thank you guys for the water management program that we have set up. Doing a good job now, that's real. Keeping the rates low. Uh, deputy clerk, roll call on this, please.
Candell?
Aye.
Donald?
Aye.
Tronley?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you, sir. Next one, letter D, 2020, 2021 wastewater disposal service user charge rate.
Thank you. Uh, in the same token, you had my communication made on May 5th of 2020. We've gone through the same analysis for the sewer rates. It has decreased slightly, but at this time, since we don't know what, uh, Macomb County or GLWA is going to hit us back with, so we are recommending to retain the same rate from last year with a hundred and fourteen and ten cents per thousand people.
I make a weight, uh, excuse me, I make a motion, we approve the wastewater disposal surface user charge rate for 20, 2020, 2021, as proposed. Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Clifford, supported by trustee Gurley. Again, any other questions, discussion? Deputy clerk, roll call please.
Clifford?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Donald?
Aye.
Tronley?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Letter E, keep McComber Home Pays Program Proposal.
If the McCombe County, um...
Thank you.
The McCombe County legislature has implemented an expanded, uh, keep McComber Home program to institute a pay-as-you-stay, uh, property tax interest and fee reduction program. And this is to help people stay in their homes longer at a reduced rate. And we need to, uh, make, we need to approve this and take part in it in order for our community to benefit.
Thank you.
Make a motion that we approve resolution number 2020 dash two, keep McComber Home Pays Program Proposal, as presented. Support.
I have a motion by clerk Candell, supported by trustee Clifford. Any other discussion, questions? Deputy clerk, please.
Candell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Donald?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Tronley?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Letter F, pet acquisition ordinance proposal. Mr. Colley, would you like to speak to this?
Uh, absolutely, Mr. Supervisor. This is, uh, an ordinance, um, that's designed to combat fraud with respect to commercially bred animals, protect against genetic issues and diseases as well. Basically, it protects against, um, the importation and broadering of large numbers of animals from puppy mills, kitten mills, uh, it talks about long-lived birds over 25 years, lizards, and the like.
This would be, um, part 13 ordinance two under our, and keeping of animals in our zone, in our, uh, township ordinances.
Make a motion?
I will make a motion that we approve the pet acquisition ordinance identified as part 13 ordinance two as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion by clerk Candell, supported by trustee Gurley. Any other questions? Deputy clerk, once again, please.
Candell?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Tronley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Donald?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Letter G, outdoor gathering request soccer club, Milladost, VIH, 25029, 26 mile road.
Mr. Supervisor, this is for an outdoor gathering in August. They're requesting, it looks from their application like they're expecting 800 to 1,000 people. So, um, I have checked with, uh, our attorney and he does not have a problem with us approving the request, but has stated that we put a condition in writing that says it's subject to cancellation at any time as mandated by law or public health concerns.
Perfect. Is that your motion?
I will make a motion that we approve the outdoor gathering permit request at Club Milladost, uh, on 26 mile road for Saturday, April, August 15th, 2020, as requested, with the following condition in writing per our legal department, subject to cancellation at any time as mandated by law or public health concerns.
Thank you. I have a motion by clerk Candell, supported by treasurer Arnold. Any other questions regarding this? Deputy clerk, roll call please.
Candell?
Aye.
Donald?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Tronley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Letter H, main building entrance safety barrier.
I don't have any concrete in that.
Superintendent Tronley?
Evening. Evening. As requested, um, I, I contacted a contractor again, uh, for this project. Uh, this is very similar to the one that we just put up in the building department office. Be the same, same scope, just different location for the main counter. As you can see, they submitted a, uh, an estimated cost quote to do this full length, starting, uh, from where Veronica sits, all the way to the far end. Multiple cutouts for document packs and so forth. Their total price came in at $19,777.
This is, it would be same type of setup as in the building department, correct?
It would look almost identical. We, uh, we would need to use a little bit thicker material because of the length to make it a little bit more sturdy. And there is some more reinforcement because of the distance and so forth. But yes, as far as aesthetically looking, it would be the same.
Mr. White, would that be a sufficient barrier, uh, for, for your recommendation?
Yes, uh, you know, certainly, uh, far better than any kind of portable kind of setups that, uh, are currently, um, you know, available out there. I think this would be more than sufficient to protect our employees. Not only now, but in the future. I'm not sure if this will be the last time we see a, uh, a virus contagion that could, uh, have an effect out of place. I think, uh, in the long term, it's good enough.
The only thing with this quote we haven't figured out is the, the door opening. Is that whatever remain the same, correct?
That is correct. Because of the, the current configuration of that counter with the passways, uh, in there, the contractor, the way he bit this out that you have in front of you, uh, would create like a return that would follow the, the existing countertop. Right now, that would stay open, but there would be barriers as far as if anybody was close to that opening for protection. With talking with him, the only doable way to enclose that, um, to create a barrier in the doorway would be to install some kind of door frame, if you will, uh, which leads to extensive modifications because of the way the countertop extends into that opening and it's not a common size. Well, my first thought, I was hopeful we hit some kind of door frame in there. Came just, not only with the barrier, but for the employee's protection too. Those things are loose, anybody can walk through there. And, uh, that's not going to change right now, then, is it? I mean, you're going to build the barrier right up to the opening and then... Correct. It would, like say if this was the opening, it would come and then return down both sides. So...
So, that, that same door would stay there?
Correct.
So, it could be modified after the fact even with this installed, correct?
Yeah, we would have to modify the countertop, the doorway, and we probably have to...
Well, I'd decide we look a little bit more uniform if we did it all at the same time.
Well, and we can. Um, we're probably looking at about an additional $2,000 to do that kind of work.
And they still $2,000 for two, what are their two doors?
Yes. Now, those were, because I anticipated this question coming up, that was the rough estimate I got today. That could vary slightly. I'm sorry?
I made you very with the last part, then.
I said that could vary slightly and I would, I would assume like the, the number that I've given you is high from what I'd had in discussion with the contractor today. So I guess just for... I mean, if you, if I just saw that we were going to do it, it, it would be easier to do it while we're doing it. Even at the extra $2,000, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but to do that and all at one time instead of coming back and, and do it again. Cause at one time we had talked about bulletproof and I felt that was too high, but this would at least offer some form of protection for people walking through those doors. You know, uh, it's not going to stop them, but I just saw long we were doing it. It might be a...
I agree with you that if, if we do it now, it won't look like it's patched in after the fact and, uh, it'll be done. We won't have to worry about it. I, I do agree with you that if it's done during this process, it would probably be a way better setup than trying to do it after the fact. And it might cost us more money after the fact than doing it while they're doing it all. Would you agree with that?
Yes, and, and if, I guess discussing with the contractor, I have an idea what he was describing to me, how he would do it. And, and judged by this gentleman's work, even if we did it later, I don't think it would look like an afterthought or an add-on, but...
I'm not doubting his work, Cam, you know that.
But also, what I would suggest is, you know, we have this, uh, this quote in front of us. If you've decided to move forward, but then put it, do not exceed with the additional doors. So we can move forward with the project in a timely manner.
I guess I'd like to see what it would look like without big old solid doors there. I, I don't see a problem with it being corded off and the doors left the way they are. So, I don't know, I, it's just my opinion.
The only, the only issue with the doors the way they are now, it's really not a secure type of situation.
I understand.
With the barrier up there, that wouldn't kind of give us a secure type of situation. Anybody can walk up with, is anybody knows you, I mean, the doors are...
They're not locked, the doors.
So, if there was doors put in, would the doors have security pads for employees if you're out in the lobby area to go back in?
No, I doubt it.
Lobby areas to come in the building, or they would have to...
Well, since it'd be pretty much a custom-made standard door, well, not a standard size, but like a standard door, it would be up to you what kind of lock sets you want to put on it. Whether you want to put combination locks on it, uh, if you want to just put a simple lock set where you can lock it on the inside, not on the outside, that, that would be up to you. And that would be only a slight variation in cost of the overall project.
I do think we're going to have to do something, uh, if, if we want to have our building used. Cause right now, we're going to have everything run through the building department. And I, I think that won't suffice for very long, so...
That what we're proposing here won't suffice, is it?
No, what we've done is just a temporary right now to, to redirect the traffic in our building. What we've already done.
Right, and they did a great job on that window, that, I don't, I don't have a problem with that.
They did a great job, but we, we definitely have to come up with something so the rest of the building gets utilized. That's, that's a problem.
I really don't have a problem. I, I, I understand the need and I don't have a problem with the money that it's going to take to do it. My only concern is with the doors. I'm just, you know, I can't picture it, so I'm having a problem with that part of it, that's all.
I just would hate, I'd, I'd hate to go back and spend more money on doors after the fact. That's my only concern, is that end up costing more. It's going to be cheaper if they're doing it all at once, in my opinion. And I, I think that's probably what you would think too.
Oh, it's always, it's always better off doing it the first time through instead of making addition. Just know that because of that, that, that's a long span, it's, it's 100 feet. To stick something in there, I mean, it's really got to be secured and, and you're talking about semi-solid door because you want it security-wise. So you really need to reinforce that frame, otherwise it's going to start working on the rest of the enclosure because it's, it's essentially freestanding.
And I mean, if it's, here's my other thought, and Mr. White might be able to say, if it is a barrier, it should be continuous. Is that, is that a correct statement?
Well, hm, I, you know, I would think anytime you continue a barrier, it's a good idea. There's no perfect science on this, uh, as far as, you know, whether a door there is going to create that much extra barrier or, or return. So from the science standpoint, I, I don't know if I have a good answer for, for you. For, from the standpoint of, if you're going to do this and the idea is to also provide security to the staff with the door, you know, I'm always going to err on the side of security. And I'm also going to suggest to you that I, I think doing it piecemeal, uh, you know, I mean, for, for what seems like a, a small amount of additional money in, in comparison to a little project, doing everything at once would seem to me to, to make some of the problems. So, just from a security standpoint, uh, you know, a, a different type of door there is probably a good idea. From an actual standpoint of stopping, you know, virus-contagion, I don't know.
Any other questions, any other discussion, you guys?
No, I, um, I know it's, I'd like to make a motion to table this until we see something that they could look at or maybe show us in a rendering how it's going to look, Cam, to, to do this. Cause I really would like to see doors that are just dressed up. I mean, I know their workmanship, it's going to be good. But I think if we, by do, by splitting it, it just, it, there's a chance it could look a little patched in, but the way they do work, maybe not. But I just, if we're going to do it once, let's do it now at an in, at a reasonable cost and not bump the price up later.
Motion is to table?
What's that?
Your motion is to table?
Motion is to table.
I support it?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by trustee Clifford, supported by treasurer Arnold. Any other question, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Uh, just to be clear, so similar enclosure, all the way down, multiple, multiple document cutouts, which you just want the additional solid doors? Additional something in the doorway that's a little bit more dressy and secure than what we have. But those doors are half-open all the time anyway, if I'm not wrong. You can pull them in, you know, just reach over, but, um, I'm not really looking for a lot of steel door-type security, but just something that dresses it up a little bit and fits the doors in there nice enough. Okay, would you want anything in particular as far as lock sets? Combination locks? No, because what the, if the, that employee, if that person really needs to get behind the counter, the employee that's working with them can open the lock set and bring them in. It doesn't have to, you know, that's personal opinion, I don't know what's...
Standard lock set?
Huh?
Standard lock set.
Standard lock sets, okay.
All right.
All right, I will recontact them. Something you can key from the outside, Cam, if we're walking in from, you know... More likely like the doors right behind you, which are, uh, common throughout this building. Uh, those are the door locks, or lock sets that I would ask them to, yeah, myself, I would.
All right, thank you. Appreciate your work, man.
Yep. Thank you, Cam.
All right, little, letter I, local state of emergency. Mr. White?
So, uh, Mr. Supervisor, board, our local state of emergency, uh, is scheduled to expire. Uh, I'm, I have in front of you a recommendation that we extend that local state of emergency for an additional 60 days. The understanding that the local state of emergency has nothing to do with when we open the office. It has nothing to do with how we deal with our parks. It really has everything to do with the idea that if there are federal resources that come available to, to the township due to the COVID-19 event, that we are, um, able to, uh, access those resources, whether it's funding or otherwise, uh, with having this in place. So with that, I'm just recommending we continue to extend it. This can be, um, uh, the, the... uh, that the local state of emergency can be canceled or rescinded at any time, uh, with several meeting of the board. So, I just recommend we go another sixty days and, uh, and have that in place.
I just would like to say that in talking with Al Addis today, he recommended that we, um, extend it to June twenty-sixth, which is coincides with the same date that the county expires.
So, um, so I've been on a call every day with the county, uh, well, not every day, but they were initially, we were every day. Now it's every week, uh, with the county of Macomb. Because of decisions the Board of Commissioners makes, um, they have been extending this thirty days at a time. But I can tell you on every one of those calls, there is an assumption that this will continue to be continued. Their board has just decided to do it in thirty-day intervals, um, due to, you know, decisions that they made. I guess I don't have a problem with bringing it before the board every month, but, you know, that's then what we would need to do. And right now, if we only extend it to June twenty-sixth, in order to keep it extending, we would have to have a special board meeting or do something to continue it then through July. So I have every reason to believe that the county will extend theirs again at June twenty-sixth. They've just been going one the month, uh, you know, and like I say, certainly we can do that. But if you want to go one the month, then my only suggestion might be that if we're going to have a July board meeting, we go until at least the date of that board meeting, so you can, you know, reevaluate that board meeting and not have to do a meeting to, to continue this approval.
And, and the sixty days, like you said, it can be rescinded at any time.
Can be rescinded at any time.
I just wanted to put out there that, what his recommendation was. I certainly don't have a problem doing it sixty days. I just...
Now, now, hearing that, Mr. Kelly, what was your recommendation?
Based on what Director White has told us, Cam, the legal department's fine with that.
I agree with that. Have a motion?
I will make a motion that we extend the Lennox Township State of Emergency for another sixty days. I'll second.
I have a motion by Clerk Candell, supported by Treasurer Arnold. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Number three, firefighters hazard pay. Mr. White?
Yeah, I, I had, uh, opposed the board, uh, as, as the board of the Ambulance Authority knows, which are joint owners of, uh, the board of the Ambulance Authority, uh, recently had approved some additional hazard pay and recognition for the work that our public safety officials have done, uh, throughout this COVID crisis. I mentioned the board the other day, uh, during a workshop, that, um, you know, kind of what our numbers have looked like locally here in the community and locally in the areas served by the EMS. Uh, what I can tell you is as of today, uh, those numbers change, uh, daily. We run a report every week. We've seen, we've actually transported or had EMS runs on sixty-one COVID patients that were COVID positive as people were confirmed by lab tests. And we've had fifty-four other runs from people that we do not have lab test results confirming COVID positive diagnosis, although they had all the symptoms of COVID nineteen. We had run as high, uh, as fifty-eight percent of our total run volume being patients suffering with COVID nineteen during the period of this crisis. Uh, today, we're averaging down around eight percent of all of our run volume. We're, we're all pleased to hear that the governor took some steps today that will further, uh, open sectors of our economy and, and our own communities. Um, and I, and I think everybody should be pleased by that. Certainly, we are at the EMS and, and the, and the numbers, I think, represent something that is, uh, uh, you know, positive for us all. But our people have really been through a lot, uh, and, and I was hoping to just do a little something to recognize them. We have sufficient funds in the salary portion of the, uh, fire department budget, um, to, to give, uh, each of the firefighters a small stipend, uh, for their work during this period. Some of that comes, um, out of just some reduced costs, uh, overall in salaries and wages at the department this year. Other parts of it come from the fact that since this began, we haven't really done any training. Firefighters normally get paid for. They get paid to attend their monthly training and we have not conducted those. So, so there are some dollars available there. My suggestion is that with this month's payroll, which I'll, uh, be processing here in the next couple of days with Clerk's Office, uh, that we would add to each firefighter's payroll a hundred dollars of, of, uh, what we'll call hazard pay for their services during the COVID nineteen crisis. Uh, there's no, there's no amount of money you could put on people risking their life every day, uh, running at a hazard that's unlike anything we've ever seen before. Normally, we can see the hazards and, and we can do our best to prevent them. In this case, we were looking at it, we were, we were running at a hazard that we couldn't even see. And, uh, so you, you know, there's no appropriate amount of money for that, but I thought this would be just a nice way to say thank you to our firefighters for their, uh, service during this time. And so I recommended the board a, uh, a hazard, a one-time hazard payment, uh, in the month of June for one hundred dollars per firefighter.
I'll make a motion to re, uh, further request the public safety director to pay each firefighter an additional hundred dollars in hazard pay for their service during the COVID nineteen crisis.
Second.
I have a motion by Clerk Candell, supported by Trustee Clifford. Any discussion, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank, no, thank you. Appreciate it. We appreciate our firefighters. Number eleven, public comment? Any public comment?
Can I say something?
Call from the board.
That's right.
Yes, go ahead.
Well, it's kind of a public comment. Um, there was an article in the New Baltimore, uh, The Bay Voice that I just wanted to kind of put it out to people. Um, we had a memorial bench at the New Baltimore Park and somebody stole it. So, if anybody knows of where it could be or hear of anything, please contact New Baltimore City or even myself, um, because it was a memorial bench and it was specially designed and...
Is there markings on it or...
Uh, there's the, um, actual, it's cast iron and it had a laser, um, marking of Adalia in the center of the bench. So it was special made, so it's like one of a kind. You can't find them like that at the store. So, um, the city of New Baltimore is also looking into it, but, um, last it was seen was on a trailer.
What did it say on it?
It was just a cast iron bench. There was a plaque that was attached to it, but the ta, the plaque could have been removed because it was just kind of riveted to it. But it was in memorial of my grandma and then there was the Adalia that was lasered out of it. So it was like I said, special made. There isn't one like it. You can't find it at a store. But it was all kind of like a bronzy colored metal. So, I went, probably about ten days ago, it's been missing, so... But they did put an article in and I just thought I'd put it out there to people out there in the public and they happen to hear of people talking about it or see it somewhere, just to, you know, unanimously tell me where it could be.
All right. So, any other calls from the board?
I just wanted to, I'm sure everybody knows by now that our Secretary of State sent out absentee applications to every registered voter. Lennox Township had, um, eight hundred and twenty-seven registered voters before she sent this out. By the time we're done this week, we will have doubled that number. We had three hundred pieces of mail today that had absentee applications in them. The last time we picked up the mail was last week on Wednesday, so you're talking about just a few days and we had over three hundred pieces of mail, so... Looks like our absentee's are going to be really high for, especially for August. Who knows? A lot, a lot of people that are studying with them back are asking to be put on the permanent list, so we're going to double.
Okay, another? Anything else? Okay. Thank you very much. Your motion?
I'll make a motion we adjourn at seven eleven.
Second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Arnold, supported by Trustee Gerley. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Meeting is adjourned.